I'd like to call this October work session and regular council meeting to order. Everybody please stand for a moment of silence. Let's remember all of those who passed away during the month. So with the flag, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under our own, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all. Paul, please.
Mr. Girard. Mr. Ricchio.
Here.
Mr. Devine.
Here.
Mr. Pezza.
Here.
Ms. Cohen.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Here.
Mr. Petrocchi, present.
Here. Just for the record, Lorraine's mom's been pretty sick and she's been dealing with a lot of issues with her mother. Okay, I'm gonna open up public comment. Anybody on this? Nick, we'll do Bristol Day first if we don't hold you up. Okay, you wanna do this? Nick, you wanna come up?
Thank you. Today, we're presenting a proclamation of historical borough Bristol County of Bucks in Commonwealth of Pennsylvania honoring the Bristol Culture and Historical Foundation for the sponsorship of the annual historical Bristol Day. Whereas the Bristol Culture Historical Foundation will sponsor the annual historic Bristol Day celebration on October 20th, 2018, and whereas this event has brought great pride into Bristol Borough and citizens embrace and honor the historical significance of Bristol Borough, and whereas the council of the borough and Bristol desire to honor the Bristol Culture Historical Foundation and the many hardworking volunteers for their efforts in this annual event, now therefore be it resolved by the council of the borough, as clearly resolved on October 20th, 2018, is hereby designated Historic Bristol Day and that the Bristol Culture and Historical Foundation is hereby honored for its sponsorship of the annual Bristol Day event. The council congratulates the participants, volunteers, and sponsors of the event, which has proven to be highlight of many community, excuse me, events in Bristol Borough duly proclaimed this eighth day of October, 2018.
Thank you so much.
And I just wanted to say that if you haven't been down there, you have to go and check it out. There's so much going on on the street. We've had so much going on in Bristol, especially when we've had our First Fridays, and this just helps end it. Like First Fridays are now over. Now on the 20th, people come over and they all get together. There's vendors out there, the shops are open. If you haven't been there, please come and check it out.
Yes, please. Well, thank you very much to the council for their generous donation. I won't be too long. We've been planning this event since the end of January, and I'm lucky I have a team of about 20 to 25 people who helped me with different aspects of this day. So I think there's going to be something for everybody. Again, the tall ship Gazella's coming back. We have the car show. If you haven't heard, of course, March Eswaldi's thrilled that Dow Chemical is bringing their number three race car to that show. We have the Children's Corner, public buildings, house tours, as Betty said, vendors, crafters. We even have the sailing regatta that takes place, weather-dependent, and a lot of different entertainment, including a military encampment. The Drummers with Attitude from Bristol Township is coming for the first time this year as well. And of course, the night before, we're holding the reception with the Gazella at the King George from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. The tickets are still for sale at Mignone Jewelry, great IDs by Ann, and the Borough Tax Office. So if anyone can please come out and support that fundraiser, that would be great as well. But again, thank you to the borough for all you do for this day.
Thank you for all you do.
No, thank you.
We really appreciate it.
Thank you. All your work.
Public comment.
You wanna drop that check?
No.
Just for that.
All right, before we go to public comment, we'll deal with JVS, who's presenting this or...
Okay.
Get on it.
Thank you.
Just state your name and everything for the record.
Ed Strantlist, employee of JVS Bristol, too.
You wanna explain why you're here and all?
We're here to ask the council for their final approval on a set of steps that had not originally been planned with the original development onto the Mill Street sidewalk. And it was actually in a conversation with the emergency director, Merrill, where he was inquiring about if there's a flood event, how best can we access these townhomes? And we didn't have a really good answer from Merrill. Coupled with some of our potential buyer wants and desires, we came and proposed a set of steps that would basically connect the front restaurant deck with Mill Street sidewalk that would then allow for any emergency personnel to readily access any of the townhomes, giving emergency personnel a chance to have a second form of ingress into any of the townhomes. And while we have privacy panels separating each of the decks on the front of the townhomes, we are going to install lockable pass-throughs for the emergency access personnel so that in the case of a flood event, and we can't get trucks, or there's a resident that's having a stroke event, and we know that with strokes, time is of the essence, and we can't necessarily have them traverse down and hop over a fence onto six feet of a drop. It was decided that we would propose, and we discussed in our June 15th kind of a workout session with Gilmore and some members of the borough staff, this idea of interrupting the deck that we've already built for a set of steps that could be used to access as well as for, you know, some tenants or some residents to also use. It would not be a primary entrance to the restaurant. They would be gated, but it would be a set of steps that would lead down to Mill Street. You'd come down to about 24 inches of grade on our own property that would allow for a smooth transition into Mill Street. Ideally, where the steps are located, and I've got visual pictures if anyone wants to get a sense, you'll come down directly onto, in the rhythm of Mill Street, you'll come down directly onto a concrete pad. So the concrete pad will get unearthed, slightly regraded, we'll redo the block or brickwork around it, but looking at it from our engineer's standpoint, who's also spoke with Kurt and Amanda from your engineering firm, they're very comfortable with the transition and how it will migrate into the Mill Street sidewalk.
Does that come off of the existing deck?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I would like to see that picture.
We'll actually cut into the deck. So it won't be an appendage on that, because we don't want to evade any of your space. So this'll give you a sense visually, a bird's eye view of how the deck will be cut and amended, and then slightly a color rendering of how the steps would look.
Thank you.
Welcome. Sure. Thank you. Thank you. I don't know for you guys. I have a hard time reading an engineering site plan. I have a copy of that as well, but I thought I would give this to you to kinda give you more of a visual color sense of exactly how it would look.
Does anybody have any questions regarding these steps?
No.
Kurt, everything's on your end, fine?
Yeah, everything's fine from our review standpoint, and this is really just a formality, just to essentially get approval from council to amend their final plan to allow a new access location from what was originally approved years ago.
Okay, so we'll make that, I don't think anybody's opposed to it, so we'll make that part of our item to be voted on this evening.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public comment.
Do you want to drop that check?
No.
Just for that.
All right, before we go to public comment, we'll deal with JVS, who's presenting this or...
Okay.
Get on it.
Thank you.
Just state your name and everything for the record.
Ed Strantlist, employee of JVS Bristol, too.
You wanna explain why you're here and all?
We're here to ask the council for their final approval on a set of steps that had not originally been planned with the original development onto the Mill Street sidewalk. And it was actually in a conversation with the emergency director, Merrill, where he was inquiring about if there's a flood event, how best can we access these townhomes? And we didn't have a really good answer from Merrill. Coupled with some of our potential buyer wants and desires, we came and proposed a set of steps that would basically connect the front restaurant deck with Mill Street sidewalk that would then allow for any emergency personnel to readily access any of the townhomes, giving emergency personnel a chance to have a second form of ingress into any of the townhomes. And while we have privacy panels separating each of the decks on the front of the townhomes, we are going to install lockable pass-throughs for the emergency access personnel so that in the case of a flood event, and we can't get trucks, or there's a resident that's having a stroke event, and we know that with strokes, time is of the essence, and we can't necessarily have them traverse down and hop over a fence onto six feet of a drop. It was decided that we would propose, and we discussed in our June 15th kind of a workout session with Gilmore and some members of the borough staff, this idea of interrupting the deck that we've already built for a set of steps that could be used to access as well as for, you know, some tenants or some residents to also use. It would not be a primary entrance to the restaurant. They would be gated, but it would be a set of steps that would lead down to Mill Street. You'd come down to about 24 inches of grade on our own property that would allow for a smooth transition into Mill Street. Ideally, where the steps are located, and I've got visual pictures if anyone wants to get a sense, you'll come down directly onto, in the rhythm of Mill Street, you'll come down directly onto a concrete pad. So the concrete pad will get unearthed, slightly regraded, we'll redo the block or brickwork around it, but looking at it from our engineer's standpoint, who's also spoke with Kurt and Amanda from your engineering firm, they're very comfortable with the transition and how it will migrate into the Mill Street sidewalk.
Does that come off of the existing deck?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I would like to see that picture.
We'll actually cut into the deck. So it won't be an appendage on that, because we don't want to invade any of your space. So this'll give you a sense visually, a bird's eye view of how the deck will be cut and amended, and then slightly a color rendering of how the steps would look.
Thank you.
Welcome. Sure. Thank you. Thank you. I don't know for you guys. I have a hard time reading an engineering site plan. I have a copy of that as well, but I thought I would give this to you to kinda give you more of a visual color sense of exactly how it would look.
Does anybody have any questions regarding these steps?
No.
Kurt, everything's on your end, fine?
Yeah, everything's fine from our review standpoint, and this is really just a formality, just to essentially get approval from council to amend their final plan to allow a new access location from what was originally approved years ago.
Okay, so we'll make that, I don't think anybody's opposed to it, so we'll make that part of our item to be voted on this evening.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public comment. Anybody on this side of the room want to speak on anything? Merrill?
Any employees or renters or business people that are parking in the parking lots currently, I just want to make you aware, we're still having the issue with these higher-than-normal high tides. So if you don't have a tide chart, it might be a good idea to get one, because the way these things are going, I've been trying to keep up with them to get notices out to people and whatever, but I don't know how much is being let out from the reservoirs in New York, so whatever's on the tide chart could be raised a little bit. So the last few, the rest of this week is gonna be almost up to flood stage on some of the high tides. So I just want to make sure everybody's aware of that. Behind the BRT theater in that lot also, and all in our Mill Street parking lot.
Well, I just said to Jim, why don't we just, on some of the islands down there, post some permanent signs that say parking lot floods, you know, on...
Yeah, all the entrances probably would be the best thing to do.
Maybe we should come up with something, and just, because you're driving yourself nuts trying to notify people, put signs on, I mean, they're lucky they have you. But I'm saying, I mean, we should just post the signs down there to just say, the parking lot floods, it's human nature, there's nothing we can do about it. There's no way to stop it from flooding.
Right. The other thing is, people that are calling up with complaints about Amtrak. We've been back and forth to Amtrak, I don't know how many times, Mr. Dillon, myself, L and I, trying to get the grass issues of people that are complaining. We have a whole lot of grass inside the fenced-in areas that can't be gotten to except by Amtrak. Now it's starting to fall here, it's starting, the green's starting to turn brown, and we had an incident about five or six years ago where we actually had a fire that started, and we had a little wind that day, and it was all the way from Cornwall's Heights all the way up to Marsville, because we had a train that was sparking along the tracks. And it, I've gotten some complaints from people in the Pine Street area in particular because that adjoins their property, and it, I mean, it's chest-high, some of the greenery that's over there. So I've asked them to come in and cut it, they did that one time before. Amtrak's had a lot of their supervisors that have retired, and the number that you call that I had for them is no longer in existence, so you try to get somebody else. And if you get somebody now, they're asking you to go through Realty. And Realty really doesn't even need to get that, because they don't know where to give the calls to. So we're waiting right now, we haven't heard anything from them, we tried citing them, they come back with that thing that we're above the law, you know, Congress acted under the government act that we can't be cited for anything, we're exempt and whatever. So, I mean, it's not right, they shouldn't be above the law, they should have to cut their grass like anybody else in the borough and comply with our own uses. So we're still trying.
Dave?
Yes, what's the chance of us getting rid of those darn fences? Because as you know, Dick Waters, my sister, and everybody along here used to maintain that, as I do, if we had access to it, you know?
We didn't want the fences to start with.
Maybe that would be, hey, just take the fences down and then the people, you know, I mean, I used to take care of 40 or 50 feet across the street, you know, so...
All the money they wasted on the fences, even from 413 down to Corrigan, you can go on that stretch and you can crawl under the fence. There's just much room, so I don't see how it's a deterrent to keep it from getting to the railroad track. It's ridiculous.
Do we have a contact person for them?
We have a main guy in New York, and we fall in, as close as we are to Philadelphia, we fall into thing for New York, so we have to deal with them. Bill Hollister, we had him down here one time before, and...
So if we're gonna remove fence, we're saying from the baseball field?
No.
To where?
No, these are...
From Jefferson to where?
No, from Corson to Pine, Pine to Spruce.
They're all the ones that they, they have different kind of fences, we have three different kinds of fences.
Saying along Garden Street, aren't you? That's where there's a problem?
That's where the problems are, between Jefferson Avenue and Bass Street is the biggest area.
Let's see, we can get a meeting with somebody, and maybe I can make a couple phone calls politically, and see if we can meet with somebody out there.
Okay.
Merrill? Anybody on this side of the room want to speak, want to go to the podium? Go ahead.
Okay, first, I want to thank everybody. It's been a long time, right? We're moving in, making settlement on October 19th, and we're very happy to be part of the township, and we're all excited about it, and so thank you for that. The other thing is, I have a complaint, the other day we took a stroll, my wife and I, and a couple of my grandkids, on the Mill Street, and we went to that new bakery, and the bakery is so wonderful, the cakes are so great. I ate too many cakes that night, my wife gave me help, here she is right here, but we recommend everybody try it. It's a delight walking down that street with the little cart coming down, and I want to thank you for growing the area, but the cakes are just too good. Thank you.
Thanks, y'all. Anybody else on this side of the room want to speak on anything?
Too much.
Okay, that ends public participation. Herbie, what do you have?
Just a couple things. This week is Fire Prevention Week. Last week, the fire prevention representatives from three of the companies went to all preschools and the elementary schools in town, and we conducted our fire prevention program. Also had the opportunity to observe a fire drill at Snyder Girardi. And I just want to mention a couple of things on the statistics that I have. Last month, there was a total of 64 responses by the fire department in town. Forty-nine of the 64 were related to emergency medical services. That's 76% of the calls that the fire department went on were related to emergency medical services. We went to 15 fire/rescue types of calls, we went to 15 cardiac arrests. Nine of the cardiac arrests were drug-related. So that a majority of our time now is being spent assisting the rescue squad on medical calls, and that's a good thing for the citizens of Bristol Borough, because not very many municipalities in Bucks County have that level of service to provide for their citizens. But it is a significant amount of our calls now.
Herbie, can I ask a quick question on that? I saw a Ben Salem ambulance in town yesterday, just kinda drew my curiosity. Was it a big event, or was there a reason why...
No, this is what, this is why we run our program with our QRS, is that when Bucks County Rescue Squad is out on another call somewhere, which could be anywhere, could be in Ben Salem, they send the next closest ambulance. That ambulance could come from Five Points, it could come from Route 1, it could come from Ben Salem, we've had them come from Marsville. And so we're there providing aid to that citizen until the ambulance coming from Marsville gets there. And so if you saw a Ben Salem ambulance, they would respond to a call in Bristol Borough because that was the closest available ambulance.
Gotcha, thank you.
Any other questions for Herbie? Thanks, Herbie. Chief?
Thanks to the council, Mr. Dillon, assistant with the casino grant application, we submitted for the three projects, the council allowed us to move on. The PBA held its first annual Fish with a Cop event, I'd say was an outstanding event for the officers and the community. Great participation by our people and their family members, and I think the kids got a real good possibility to see the police officers in a different light, which is something that we really push very hard. We've been doing a lot of enforcement on Radcliffe Street, Councilman Petrocchi's meeting with Penn Dot, we also followed up on that, and we're trying to hit the rush hours, and we know where the problem's coming from, where the problem's going to, so we've been specifically hitting those hours and just making an impact down there. And lastly, unfortunately, the job doesn't get any easier, we upped our less-than-lethal component, we just went through officers, put another tool in our toolbox, what they call a less-lethal option when it comes to, it's basically a super sock type of situation where it's used with a shotgun, where, God forbid, we have to have a situation where somebody is a suicidal subject or a subject that is armed with a knife, and we have the ability to get the less-lethal weapon in play, now we have it in our toolbox to bring it out. Hopefully we have the time to do it, all the officers have been trained in it at this point, hopefully we'll never have to deploy it, but again, just something else we're trying to bring up our standards. That's it.
Any questions for the chief?
Do we still have Bike Patrol, or do we know when that's going to stop?
We never have, when we say Bike Patrol, we put bikes out here and there for whatever to address, but it never stops. It's like, they'll be out on Bristol Day, we have it scheduled for, we have Halloween week coming up, we go for that, but, you know, the bikes are there, they use them when we can.
Okay.
You know, we also have two officers that, Officer DePaolo just gave a, his wife just gave birth to a baby girl, excuse me, baby boy, Benjamin, and Officer Webb is also about, his wife's probably ready to give birth, so that staffing issues become a little bit dicey sometimes during these times.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions for the chief?
No, just congrats to Mr. DePaolo.
Thank you.
All right, Greg, you have anything?
Yes. On the alleyway behind Haynes Street, there is a French drain that has collapsed. I know we had dealt with a French drain situation back there before that we determined it was actually the owner's French drain and the owner's responsibility. I just wanted to see if we could get someone out there to take a look at it, to see if it is in fact ours or the property owner's, you know, that, it's like an awkwardly angled alleyway off of Garfield, in between Garfield and Hayes. So yeah, if we could stick with that. And then, just very excited to see that Riverfront North is progressing now. If you saw that the facades came down, there was an original stone front there, and those facades came down, and I believe that a new project is underway, so it's a good thing.
Yeah, or you could bring it up.
That's all I have.
All right, Tony, what do you have?
I don't have anything.
Dave?
Yes, thank you. I got a letter from the Bristol Alumni and Athletics Association, if I can read it. General membership meeting Wednesday, October 17th at 7:00 o'clock at the Bristol Canal Works, 10 Canal Street. Dear members, I'm happy to announce our first membership meeting of the new year. We'll be meeting at the beautiful Canal Works building, which we brought back to life so vitally and beautifully as a location for a number of businesses under the leadership and knowledge of Bernard Ruzonki. We will be giving a brief tour of the building as part of our meeting. We will also go over what transpired since our last meeting in April, which will include an overall discussion of where the association is now and wants to go, as well as details of our successful golf outing held on September 17th. An active membership is essential to carry on the many benefits this association provides the community in grants, scholarships, and donations, over $130,000 so far since 2004. Additionally, your membership dues are $10, okay, and keep you informed of the meetings and the activities. Please encourage others to join this organization, it's totally non-political, it's just for the kids. One does not need to be a graduate of Bristol High or a former athlete to join BAA, because the association is open to all who cherish the athletic tradition of Bristol and who want to support the students, coaches, and teachers of our fine school district. Sincerely, Mike Girard, a legacy of achievement and commitment to the future. That's a great organization. We've been at the Center of the Arts, Museum, the library, Daz's Distillery, Bristol High
and get going on everything. Now, on the original, on the original paper, and I'm just going to keep this to roofing because that's what I do for a living, it stated that replacement of 25% of existing roof material, that you didn't need a permit. And I, I never bothered with that, or I never did anything with that, I just, you know, I'd come in for a permit or whatever, township, wherever I went, hey, do I need a permit for this? If they said yeah, I picked up that permit. And the reason I'm having this whole discussion, that was in 2004, is, I don't know if you've been following the Courier, but on September 28th, Lower Southampton's got themselves in a wringer, apparently, they were having zoning issues, and the, what happened was, Pennsylvania had to come in, okay? And what they did, and I'll quote, "Lower Southampton wrongly charged for permits for over a decade." And the zoning officer confirmed that the 2004 change in the Uniform Construction Code excluded the need for permits for all residential alternations if there are no structural or egress changes. This means building permits aren't required for replacements of residential roofs, siding, doors, and windows in municipalities that did not previously require permits." So, that's, and then they had the solicitor get involved on page two, and his name was Mr. Dillon also, Council Solicitor Frank Dillon, said it appeared that the fee schedule was not updated to reflect the change in the state law. So, just for clarification, what's going on with these articles I'm reading? Does Bristol follow the Pennsylvania Uniform Code, or, I do believe, my understanding was that we can take that code and we can build on it, but if Bill or Jim could give me some, why am I reading these articles?
Well, unfortunately, Mr. Gerard, what the paper didn't explain is, when these codes are created, the 2004, 2006, or whatever, it's up to each municipality whether they're going to upgrade it or not, okay? So, we don't have the same UCC code as some other municipality necessarily, okay? So, it doesn't mean every time a new one comes out, we have to adopt it, okay? So, I would have to go back through our ordinances, but we may, we may have the 2003 code, you know, we have a different one for property maintenance, we have another one for construction code. So, we go by what we adopted, not by what the most recent one is. So, they may have adopted a code and not followed it, but I could assure you, we follow the code that we adopt, okay? It just may be different. So, what you're reading there as to what their requirements are may not be our requirements, okay? So, every time a new code comes out, we don't have to adopt it. So, every municipality doesn't have the same version of the UCC.
My only question is that apparently, Lower Southampton had a code, hey, you come in for, let's just keep it roofing, you come in for a roof, you need to get a permit, okay? But according to this article, because they had other issues with their zoning, what it says here, "After the Pennsylvania Department of Labor Industry, which oversees the building code compliance, visit the zoning department and learn about the error," they changed that. They, they've been doing it for quite a few years, and then Pennsylvania stepped in and says, "Don't do that no more." As a matter of fact, anybody that you did for the last six months, you got to give a rebate to.
Well, go ahead, you're reading the newspaper, I'm telling you.
Yeah, I am.
Okay, you're relying on that they understand, and I'm telling you is, they have adopted a code that they were not following, but every code is different. So, we may not have adopted a new one in years because we feel the one we have is what we want. Now, council's free to say they want to adopt a newer one, okay?
Okay, and say this guy, say that guy Chris Shoemaker comes to Bristol, right, he sends a crew to Bristol, and he starts working, and our building inspector say, "Yo, yo, yo, buddy." And he pulls out that 250 thing, like, "Yo, I do everything across Pennsylvania."
I'm telling you, he has to go in each town and see what code was adopted.
Okay.
It's not the same code in every town.
Yeah, all right, well, it was my understanding that the code, Pennsylvania code was just to make, make it so no matter where I went, everybody's following the same rules, okay?
Well, they're the minimum requirements, if I remember correctly. When they passed it, that's the minimum requirements.
But each one's a little...
Each municipality could put more stringent...
That's, that's what I was...
Each one's a little...
That's what I was...
...for codes, and I think, didn't, am I wrong, didn't Lower Southampton have some issues with some criminal, some criminal issues?
They have a lot, they have a lot.
Yeah, so that brought the Pennsylvania in. That's why they came in.
I don't think it's because they're charging for permits.
Okay.
But maybe they, you know...
They doesn't tell us what code to adopt.
Okay.
Okay, we have, we have the discretion to adopt the code, and sometimes, we don't like what the changes are, it's not worth it, but we could certainly look into that and, you know, but the article was misleading.
I think that, before you adopt...
One more quick example, if I may, was years ago, you know, I worked in Bristol, you have a license, you get a hundred bucks. So, you go to Bristol Township, "I need a permit," you know, "Got a license?" "Yeah, I got Bristol Borough license." No good, you get Bristol Township, a hundred bucks. Go to the same thing, fall, everywhere I went, a hundred bucks. It used to cost me five or six hundred hours to work throughout Bucks County through the year. And then Pennsylvania came along and said, "For residential work, all you need is a state license." And since Pennsylvania said that, that's it, I just get a state license now.
But not if you're doing commercial work.
Not if I'm doing just residential, and the article was just residential, all right, but thank you.
But you got, you know, last time we adopted a code, you need to sit down with the fire chief, you need to sit down with the building inspectors, you need to sit down with the zoning officers, because there could be something in there that isn't something we want, so you can't just adopt this hard-blanch ordinance without really studying it to make sure what you want and what you don't want in there.
Yeah.
What they try to do is make it more uniform for standard inspections.
Okay.
That's basically what, but you know, there's a lot of stuff in there about fire and things that, you know, you really need, it takes you a year to go through something to really understand it.
Yeah, it's complicated, that's why I was asking the pros. Okay, thank you.
If you want to waive the roofing permits, we could vote on that tonight.
Well, I'm going to be retiring pretty soon, so it doesn't matter to me anymore.
The only thing I wanted to make the Bristolians aware of is the Margaret Grundy Library and Grundy Foundation have, they've opened up a show called Shopping and Dining in Bristol, Then and Now, and this is part of their archival process with all the old photos in town, and it's, it's at the library from, it opened on Friday and it'll run through October 31st. Of course, the library's always been an active supporter of the Bristol Day activities, so it'll be part of that, but it's, I was there the other night, and it's really interesting, you know, when you see some of the old photos of Mill Street and Harriman and the other business areas in town, it's, they've done a nice job of this. Just want to make everyone aware that it's worth it, and it's, there's no charge at the libraries that you can go in and see this display.
Yes, thank you. Can we send notice to the, Mr. Gould, he's the gentleman that purchased that property, Gould Time Property on Market in Wood? It's a muddy mess over there, people are parking on there. I thought we sent him a letter to maybe put a fence up or restrict parking somehow. There's, there's vehicles there all the time, and they jump in the curb on both sides, on the Wood Street and the Market Side, the Market Street side, and there's just mud all over at times, especially with all this rain. So, it's running, it looks horrible over there. I don't know if we could send, send something to him. And also, I walk around a lot throughout Bristol, I make it a point to walk through the entire West Ward several times a week, and then I'm throughout Bristol. I did send an email, you guys got copied on that, for the possible adoption of the International Maintenance Property Code, or parts of, whatever we decide to adopt. I know we had the 2014 version. Along my travels, I see a lot of properties that are, whether they're rental or homeownership, they're in a state of bad disrepair, and some of them, they not only bring their property values down, but they're also, a lot of them are unsafe. I had included some pictures in the email, porch has fallen down, that nature. I'd like to take a stronger stance and, you know, and address that.
I don't think there's anything in any of our codes that do not address that, I mean, especially rental, and if it's a homeowner, and there's a porch that's collapsing and all, I don't, I don't feel there's anything that...
Yeah, there's, as a matter of fact, I took a picture of that.
I know, but I'm saying, without, like, right now, tomorrow, if there's an issue, go ahead, correct me if I'm wrong, with a safety issue or a porch ready to collapse, our code definitely has to handle that.
Handle that, okay.
And as far as if you want to look into, it's like what Dave just brought up, if you want to look into adopting a different version or something like that, we would really need to have John and Herbie and Paul and everybody come in and study these changes to see, is it, you know, the right thing to do, the wrong, do we take a section of that? Things like that take a lot of time.
No, I understand.
I mean, if you want, we can get a committee together and look at everything, I don't have a problem with that, but just to say, "Let's adopt this," but for what you're saying, there's not even a question in my mind. We definitely have things in our ordinance right now that resolves any kind of safety issue.
Yeah, one, as a matter of fact, one of them, I think you may have been copying on, was the main service line coming in on a house on Locust Street, coming in, and there was like, there was no, the sheeting was gone, you know, so I know we...
That's a fire hazard.
Fire hazard, exactly.
So, that's something that they would give them like 24 hours to correct. Whether they own it, and if they don't, the Borough has the ability to lean that property and go, and go fix it.
I know there's properties, like this one, for instance, on Locust Street, nobody's living there, but the guy pays his taxes, and from what I was told, is that, well, if the guy pays his taxes, you can't leave it in a state of disrepair either, it's a long park, and it's throughout the town, not just the West Ward, I see it all over, but I did include it in the email, if you, if you looked at the email that was forwarded from Mr. Dillon, there's pictures in there.
I read it, it was in our package.
You see the picture of the one porch, it looks like it's collapsing, that's right on Buckley Street, so...
I don't think we need to adopt a new ordinance just to take care of this, I think...
Oh yeah, not a new ordinance, I know we have the International Maintenance...
Right, Property Maintenance.
Property Maintenance Code, it's 2014 edition, the new edition come out, I don't know what the exact differences are, and if it's something...
That's, that's what you need to compare. But to address your concerns immediately, that could be done tomorrow morning. There's no reason why we can't address these concerns.
Yeah, I'm out all the time, I'm always sending something to Mr. Dillon, so I'll forward the address in regarding that.
What else you got?
That's all I have, thank you.
Eddie?
Last week, there was an organization in town, a women's place, you see the purple ribbons all through town, they came in and hung them, and they won't come back 30 days later and take them down, they're just, you know, domestic violence, bringing awareness to Bristol. They're also looking into moving back into Bristol. We've been meeting, and as soon as I get all the final details for that, I will let everybody know. I think it's needed in a lot of places, but it's nice to see if they do come back to We all know next month is Thanksgiving, and we have Diane Cologne, who's always worked tirelessly with all her family and friends. She's accepting any donations for anything for, you know, Thanksgiving dinner, whether it's canned goods, turkeys, or whatever, she collects, she drops off, and you can also give her names if you know anybody who needs anything. If you can't get in touch with her, you could always come through me. And I had a call last week, somebody who takes food to the food bank all the time, she wanted somebody from there to come here, they're a little tied up right now, but if anybody wants to continue doing donations for the food bank, canned goods or noodles or stuff like that, it's always welcome. We do help out a lot of people, not only Bristol Borough but out of Bristol, but anything that anybody can do is greatly appreciated. But again, if anything, you know, could think of anything you want to donate to Diane Cologne, just let me know, or she's on Facebook, she's put it out there every year, and it's always a good time to help the needy, to have a good holiday season. That's all I have. Oh no, I have one more. Luke Oil. Mr. Dillon, Luke Oil, every, every few months, they forget they're a gas station or a service station, where it looks like an auto, auto lot, it's got like eight cars sitting there, just sitting there. They don't have for sale signs on them, they're just sitting there. So, we need to address that before it gets out of control again, which I think already is necessary. Thank you.
Joe, I'll let you go before Meg, so...
Okay. Just a couple things. I want to thank Chief Slack for the excellent work that he's been doing in the Borough. I mean, he's always been doing a great job for us, but he's really been focusing in on emergency medical calls and fire calls, you know, and some of the information that he, that he gave us, I was going to talk about, but he covered it pretty well. But I think it's important to understand the transition that our fire department has been going through over the years, and specifically Engine 51, or Rescue 51, I should say, the increased calls, the number of calls that they're getting, they're taking. Also, too, with that, every one of those calls, you know, there's a police responding to these calls, and as Chief Slack pointed out, in some cases, there are additional fire trucks responding on these calls also. So, it's a collective effort in working on this problem. Also, too, in the, the medical emergencies, the nine cardiac arrests, six were overdose related, and there were two fatalities. So, that doesn't, we're not getting away from that. I want to thank Chief Henry for the effort that the police department's putting in on focusing in on the opioid epidemic that we have throughout the county, and his work with a lot of different agencies, along with the dedicated work of our police officers trying to stem this. Also, working with the fire chief and the police chief in looking at our final budget for 2018, and putting together, or have put together, the 2019 budgets, which I know we'll probably be getting to in the next couple of weeks. Also, too, we're preparing for our annual, or I guess semi-annual audit from our risk assessors, and I've got some information that the manager sent to the police department and the fire department, which will be meeting on November 6th. Now, for the good news. I want to thank the Grundy Foundation and the Grundy Library. On the 24th of September, at the Bristol Riverside Theater, we had Captain Daniel W. Bursh, who was an astronaut, who actually was born in Bristol, who actually held the record of 244 days in outer space, which has since been eclipsed over 300 people, a lot of kids. I'd say probably better than half of the people at the Bristol Riverside Theater that night were students. And I think the captain, Bursh, should be commended, stayed around another hour and a half afterwards, and signed pictures and autographs and talked to a lot of people. I talked to some people who were there, came as far as Washington DC, Virginia, Allentown, just to come to this event. So, it was put on by the Grundy Library, the Grundy Foundation, in conjunction with the schools and so forth, so it was a great day. Also, too, as Chief Henry remarked, we got some great coverage from the Courier on the Fish with a Cop. I was there that day, we had around, I'd say around 45 kids, and quite a few volunteers. Officer Palmer, who put this together along with Sergeant Joe Moore's, they're looking to expand it for next year, and they're going to start working on that, which was a really great day. I'm going to end with the, every year, the 21st Century Learning Centers put on the annual Fall Classic, it's November 17th this year, it'll be at the Bristol Borough Public Works Building, we held it there a couple of years ago. That effort is to raise funds for education of all of our children in school in Bristol Borough. This year, we're honoring Dave Harris, one of the owners of Harris Fuels, and a person who has more or less dedicated his life to service in Bristol Borough through some... who has more or less dedicated his life to service in Bristol Borough through so many different organizations. And also, too, he spent some time in Humerville as their mayor. Was born and raised here. Tickets are on sale at the normal places in town, NIDs, the tax collector's office, Mignone Jewelers, and it's $50. And that's November 17th. And I think that's all my public service information.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to have Kurt and Amanda just enlighten us on the MGP update, the engineer update of the Community Development Grant for Handicap Curbs, the update on the conceptional plan for the waterfront improvements. Do you want briefly touch on them, or give council a...
We can do it in that order, and I'll let Amanda do the CDPG curb ramps, since she's most familiar with that project. But I think in your packets, people got the PICO letter about the manufactured gas plant. So there's really not a whole lot more that we can add to what's in that letter, but PICO basically just is letting us know that they're coming back into town, they're going to set up a very similar operation to what they had out there previously by the Goodwill Fire Company property. It's going to be the neighboring properties in that same area, and they're going to really do phase two of what they already did. They're going to remove, well, maybe phase three or four, but, you know, the major one they did was underneath where the firehouse is located, and now they're going to do out in the road, and the property across the street and towards the Bread Company building.
Did anybody say how long this is going to take?
I don't know if they gave a real...
It says June of 2019.
Yeah.
They hope to have it done.
They're hoping to get started in December, and it'll run through June. But as far as, you know, closing roads and stuff like that, they're going to submit a traffic plan.
And I hope they're considering the firehouse with Bingos and the plates and everything they have.
Yeah, and we brought that up to them, and, you know, they said that they also want to use a different traffic route than what they used in the past. They want to go out...
Hal Street?
Hal Street, and to that intersection. So again, we want to see that in a traffic control plan that we'll be able to review with staff, and review and add comments to try to minimize the impacts to the neighborhood, because it's, remember the last time, it's a pretty...
It was a nightmare.
...invasive process.
All right.
When is this supposed to start, I'm sorry?
December through June.
Okay.
Kurt, they're removing more public yards than they did originally?
Yeah, my recollection...
According to this letter, it seems to say...
Was when they, I guess, they sort of set up a project, and they completed the project, and in doing that first phase, they're kind of, they were able to see maybe if there was more of this material that was beyond the boundary to which they were working within. They did find more, and so they're going to those limits to remove that material as part of this phase.
Are they going to be doing a meeting with the general public and that, you know, the neighbors? I know they did that the last time.
Did they have it? Already, they will be.
Yeah, they have it.
And they're also going to re-implement their webpage for this project.
Good idea.
And there's going to be a link off the borough's webpage for people to go to to get more information and updates.
Unfortunately, people don't always get connected to those links, so I'd like to really, you know, impose on them and having them at least notify the residents in that area, because they think it's all done and over with.
Yeah, they're going to host a, like, an open house kind of Q and A session.
Okay.
Kurt, do you know, does he know those drums across the street, along the fence line, going back towards house, there's about 20 55 gallon drums there?
I haven't seen them, I don't know.
It says non-hires, Mr. Lee, well, non-hires, they've been there for a while, though.
I don't know.
All right, Amanda?
Yeah, real quick, I can tell you about the county grant. So, again, the borough was awarded this year, the Community Development Block Grant, which is CDPG through the county. The borough got funding last year to upgrade 8 acre curb ramps, so this year will be sort of the same project along the same scope. We do actually plan to now combine them, since there are two years of funding sources, and rebid them through the winter, and hopefully complete them early spring. So that'll be various intersections around the borough, but we're focusing on areas that are more walkable and close to Snyder Girardi, so...
How about the high school? Are there any that are close to high schools?
Right, most of the ones around the high school have been upgraded along Wilson Avenue.
Right on...
Right, so...
On the high school side, they have been, but there are two that it's kind of awkward, because there's actually like a hay path, and there's a handicap ramp across the street, but not on the opposite side of the high school. I was just wondering how you guys are identifying which one?
Right on the, you're saying at the intersection of the high school?
So if you're staring at Bristol High School...
Yeah.
The ramps on either side of it are down to the side streets, but if you're crossing the street from the other side of Bristol High School, there's no ramp...
Okay.
...coming off Garfield.
Okay.
It's just awkward, because every other corner has one except for Garfield.
Yeah, you can look at that one.
Yeah, it just seems like a natural spot that's there.
And I think they're missing one on Railroad Avenue...
Right.
...and Wilson.
There, Railroad, I think, is the last one along Wilson Avenue.
For that whole shot.
Wilson, and Con Street is not yet completed, but that will be upgraded as part of the Mill Run project, so that will hopefully complete Wilson Avenue.
Amanda, can you take a look at the Memorial Field? It's surprising that there's no handicap cutouts there, or Jefferson Avenue, right at the ball field.
Okay, at the ball field.
And I think that's a big good spot to...
Yeah, okay, cool, we'll look at that. And then I think we have...
And on this conceptional plan for the Basin Street. All right, just so you know, there was, I think we left the board in there, but the grants everybody had in their packet, we applied for Basin Street, the police command vehicle, the police video camera system, the police body cameras, and to upgrade our television system. There are five items that'll be on the agenda for October 30th, with redevelopment authority for the gaming commission money. So that's the five projects that was identified. All right?
So Matt actually has the big...
Go ahead, Kurt.
I was just going to say, I don't know which board you're referring to, but we do have the waterfront master concept plan. I don't know if anyone's seen it, we've had it in Borough Hall for a couple of weeks, but do we want to put the projector on for the waterfront?
I mean, it's, do you want us to get it?
I mean, we could, or...
It's right in there.
But I think that's part of what you're talking about with the casino grants, like the park...
Right.
...along Basin Street, but, you know, there's been discussions, we've been discussing it for some time, it's been discussed in the borough for more than a decade, the...
And this isn't a final drawing?
No, not at all. This was very conceptually prepared, but we just want to kind of unveil it tonight and sort of get people thinking about it, talking about it. So what you can see on that board is, this is kind of an overall comprehensive master plan.
Kurt, do you want to do this?
Sure. So this is a master concept plan that was thrown together by our office, and we tried to add elements that we've been talking about, elements that we've heard locals talk about, council members, staff, and so on and so forth. So just to kind of run you through quickly what we're looking at here, at the top of the, at the top of this page here, that's Mill Street. And these are the new docks, the wharf is right here. What we're talking about, the casino grant, is focused on that Basin Street widening project. That's what we've seen concepts to before. This plan reflects what we're talking about doing there, is like a phase one. Okay, the rest of the project is, it surrounds, basically it surrounds the marsh. I mean, there's the Bristol Marsh, the parking area right now is behind the shops of Mill Street. You'll see that not all of it's parking, this area here is actually converted to a green space. And down here, at the point of the marsh and the river, is some event space, kind of like an amphitheater, something where, you know, perhaps events like the DOUP could be held. It does take away parking, so, like I said, this is a very conceptual drawing. We have not done parking calculations to see what this would yield as far as parking calcs, but we're hopeful that we can make up parking by being a little more efficient with the way it's set up, like in here. And we've even tossed the idea out of possibly stacked parking, like a parking garage. Again, there's no price tag on this project yet, these were just, we threw everything we could think of, that we've talked about for many years, onto a concept plan to get people thinking and talking about it. As you come up, you know, here's the Public Works Building. Here's the Aqua Tanks for the water filtration area and storage. This area now, if you've been to an event, you'll see people that dump their cars on there as an informal parking area to begin with, so we're talking about possibly adding parking in it. Also, there's a piece of property on the other side of Old Route 13 that's privately owned, but that's a possible area to expand parking. It's an area that's been used for parking for events as well. There's a lot of action in the area right now with trails. And so what this plan does, you know, it's an important thing, you know, we have the grant for the Maple Street Bridge, which is right here at the end of Maple Street, Maple Beach, I should say, behind the Public Works Yard, and that's something that's in design right now, but that's going to gain access to the other side of the marsh, where there's conservation easements and nature areas to walk and to do birding and other activities. So we want to try to create trails that spur off of the D and L Canal, this is the terminus of the canal, so that's a trail that goes north. And Heritage Conservancy with other organizations are trying to implement a trail that goes from the marsh, Bristol Marsh, over down Old Route 13, and down State Road to connect to Croydon Woods, which is the land down State Road next to, excuse me, River Road, next to the new elementary school, the new rebuilt elementary school. So there's a lot of trails that will come together at this location, so we're trying to connect trails up and connect them around the marsh, and who knows, possibly a future trail that might make its way out along the levee, along the front of the Dow property on Maple Beach. Other features, we're still keeping the same kind of loop road in the back, and one of the concepts on this plan, again, this is all conceptual, is possibly closing off the two streets here and making them plazas, plazas for people to walk, but not have vehicles on, so to kind of formalize the circulation of traffic. Go ahead, Greg.
First of all, I, there are a lot of things on there that I think are very exciting. And I see that there, so I know we had discussed that amphitheater idea, which I think is fantastic. I mean, if you think about just the traffic, the foot traffic that Mill Street has gotten from the boat docks alone, which are, I mean, you know, minimal in the number of people that it can handle, I just can't imagine what that would actually do in the long run. I personally think that would be a tremendous goal to have for that project. And I know, you know, there are monuments in place, there are things that would have to be handled delicately and appropriately, and, but I would just encourage everyone to kind of keep an open mind about this stuff as we move forward, and knowing that it's fully conceptual at this point in time. But anyway, I see that there's a, it looks like another set of boat docks out there?
Yeah, as you were talking about that, I was reminded that I failed to mention another set of boat docks, and again, very conceptual, although I do encourage us to go after the money. I think there's still more money under the same program that was used for the main docks. But there's actually a formal or informal small boat launch in this location already.
Right.
Kayaks, canoes, and so forth. And that's a real trendy, popular thing for people to do. So we could formalize that canoe kayak type launch, and the other thing, there's a lot of people that are frustrated, they can't use personal water crafts, and we couldn't really open up this facility to personal water crafts, but perhaps an area down here kind of separated, so they're not banging into boats and whatever, tying it up for where the 26 foot plus boats are intended to be. Maybe that's an opportunity to welcome them into town via that facility.
My pointer. Don't leave what, I just found it again.
It's a nice one.
Yeah. So basically, like Kurt said, it's in the early stages, but if you're going to dream, you might as well dream big. Put that dock in, the second dock, isn't that bad, because we already did the pier, we got the floating docks, you're basically just attaching to that. I know it's, you know, like I said, when we sat down and we went through a lot of things, I just put this in, put that in, and let's see where it goes, can we get money? But this site here, where am I at? This piece in here, this is the Roman House site. To me, if we could take that property, it's a massive amount of parking.
You mean to park at the existing parking lot?
Along Old 13, clean that whole area up. People can park there and walk down.
What's that, the old Gallagher tires buildings that we're talking about?
No, gone down, Old 13.
Put a sign on your left.
Were Roman Haws, are there parking lots?
It's actually bottom left of that sheet, is what I think, but down...
So that's one area, because people say we're going to pull these cars. The second thing is a parking garage, but, you know, if we can get that property, maybe have another shuttle that runs, or something like that. There's a lot that could be done down there, redoing the whole parking lot.
And even where Tony said, like, where Gallagher's, where the tire place used to be.
Well, that's all property of people in.
People, yeah, but people already park there when we have events.
Right, but that's not, that's something we've been working with, with the owner of that property maybe trying to give it to us, and, you know, they could take the write-off for it. So there's a lot going on right now, it's just a matter of, it always comes down to money, but we've been very successful in getting money. And while I'm staying on that subject, I mean, just to let you know, we just got $361,000, $845 grant for the sewer. We just got another $167,450 for the Adams Hollow Creeks to do that flood study, and that's through the thanks of Tommy Tomlinson. So when everybody says, you know, these are the people that helped Bristol, I can't make it any clearer. I mean, you know, without their help, and the county's been very generous, they gave us a million dollars towards the docks, they gave us money for other things, but we have relations, we have built relationships over the last 16, 17 years with Fitzpatrick, with Tomlinson, with Galloway. The people that, you know, when you go to them and you need something, they take care of you. So in my opinion, for projects like this to continue, and for Bristol to continue getting the money that we've been getting in, I think we have made, over the last, since I've been here, we have to take in 10 to 15 million dollars, if not more, in grants. And it was always the same people. We went to Galloway, we went to Tomlinson, we went to Fitzpatrick. I stood on the front steps of Borough Hall when we, this building was falling apart, and Tommy Cargan and Tommy Tomlinson was outside, and they said, "How much you need?" I said, "$250,000." They both, before they even left the borough, said, "We'll give you $125,000 each," and the Grundy Foundation matched it. That's how this all started, with building relationships. So, you know, everybody says it's 10, 15 million dollar project. It's not out of the, you know, you reach for the stars. I like to put some kind of... I like to put some kind of boardwalk along the marsh. I mean, we brought that up, Greg, before about, you know, different things where people come in and, you know, walk down there. It really can be nice. So you gotta have a vision.
Since we're talking about it, I mean, just recently, have we ever talked about Mill Street itself? I know with the parking on each side. Like to me, I always think about, what would make that successful? What would make people want to come down there and walk? If we got rid of the car on both sides, make Mill Street the one lane, and then you stretch out so that way people, you know, these restaurants can put... No, 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 no. I'm just saying, get rid of the... They can park in the back. Just let them drive through so that way there's no parking. That's what people complain about anyway. People that are just parking are people that work there. So people that are trying to use, they can't get there anyway to use the parking. But if you extend it, the sidewalks out, where people, the diners can do what you do down the city, now you can go out, you can have those little tables, you can eat, you can be out there more festive. I mean, I don't know how it works in a state highway, but...
You know, you got buses going down. And we looked at angle parks. Oh, yeah. Lake Philly, they closed Chestnut Street, they closed some of these streets for, you know... There's so much that this town that I think we can keep doing, as long as you can dream and have the vision and have the people to support these projects. I think we can continue, you know, on the same path that we have started. Dave?
Yeah, Kurt, excuse me. Getting back to the point where kayakers and the canoes go in, including myself, what everybody does is they park as close to that point as they can because they gotta carry or drag their kayaks to that point. If you don't have an area there where they can park their cars, if you move the kayakers and the canoeers back further, so you can get in the river anytime you want at that point.
Right.
Low tide, high tide. Back in the swamp, forget it.
Correct.
Marsh, you're not getting in there low tide. So I don't know where a kayak or a canoeer could park. I mean, it's way... I don't know how you would do that, but if you please could try to incorporate that into plans. I see a ton of people going out there, and they really enjoy the kayaking, and that's where they go at, right there at that point.
Good point.
We might have to put another tram up there for kayaks.
Yeah, yeah, a tram, of course.
All right. Kurt, go ahead.
I think one thing is people, outsiders have a new vision of Bristol Borough. You talk to people, you meet them on the street. I see them walking down Radcliffe Street. They're not from town. They hear about it, they come down there, and everybody's comments are always very positive. I think what's more important is that people in Bristol have a new opinion of our town. Some people were always the naysayers, and they just are never, never content, never, you know, it's never gonna happen. And we see it happen now. And you could... If you go down that street on a Saturday or Sunday, and there's people walking, you know, Thursday and Friday nights, there's people walking down the street, you know, especially on Mill Street. So I think by having these dreams has certainly paid off in the past. And I want to thank Gilmore and Associates for their input on this because they've always done it.
There aren't many clients that we would present something like this to, that we would actually feel confident that it could be built. But you guys are definitely one of them, so I think this can be a reality.
Okay. What's that?
Scott, what's your question?
Sure.
Can that change the Basin Street vote of the plan that we had originally seen? Is there any change to that?
No, it's virtually identical.
So how has changed that original plan you guys showed us?
Correct.
The original plan is shrubbery against the deck, sidewalk, and then the road over to the sidewalk. That's the original plan.
What we saw?
Yeah. And I should have caveated. The Phase One with the casinos is really the part that wraps down around the wharf.
And the poles stay in the middle?
Uh, no, the poles will get relocated. But we actually phased even that improvement because we're not going up into the PennDOT area where Radcliffe intersects. That's another... The casino grant wouldn't even cover that. That's a bit... That's another bigger project, Phase Two of the...
All right, we're working with PICO right now about moving the poles.
Better reduce the park area so you have less park and more highway.
Uh...
I think you weigh about two hundred feet.
Not a lot, not a lot.
All right. Kurt, thank you. All right, so Greg touched a little bit on Island View. And with him and Lorraine's request, we met with the bankruptcy attorney last week, Kevin... What was his last name?
Oh, Howard.
Oh, Howard. I know he was a pizon of yours. So we recommended that Greg and Lorraine and myself had asked them if they would come in maybe next month and present something to give everybody some reassurance that this project's gonna go. So McGrath is the builder of the project. The federal judge appointed a bankruptcy attorney who's overseeing the project. So that project should be up and running. And I think they want to put up about another 20 units or more just to put confidence back into the builder. So there's a... You'll see a lot going on there shortly. And it's gonna be the same home or look the same as the ones they're building up at St. Joe's. So if anybody goes up to St. Joe's, you can see that the home, they're changing the fronts to brick fronts and all that. I told you about the casino grant applications. Talking about the corner of Mill Street and Radcliffe, across from the King George, the Cantina, and the old Stocks property. I think that the... There's a major issue there, Kurt, and I know we talked about crosswalks. I think we need to put some kind of lighting in that lights up that intersection. Because I don't care if you stop at that stop sign when you make that turn, you can't see people crossing. So I don't know how we go about it, but I think it's something that should be put on the front burner and really look at whether it's another street light, whether it's decorative lighting, but something has to come out and light up that entire intersection. It's too dark there. So I've... The other night I was out with Betty. We stood there, you could just see the cars that you can't see people crossing the street. So we need to figure something out there sooner than later. The lot off of Garden Street, that 25 by 100 lot that somebody bought that doesn't maintain, the fence is hanging. I'm getting a lot of complaints from people over there. Can we get that guy either bring him in or cite him or do whatever we have to do? But he's gotta straighten that lot out. The doo-wop was another successful doo-wop this year. The people, like Louis said, there's so many people from out of town that are just blown away about what's going on in this town. The boats were docked off of boats out there. They were anchored out, and it was a great night. The weather cooperated, and everything went great. We're still working with the county on the generator from across the street for the high-rise. It's not... They were supposed to do something this year. I think they're gonna do something, but not exactly what we want. But just so everybody knows, we didn't forget about what's going on over there. The Adams Hollow Creek flood study, and I said earlier that we got $167,450 grant. We have to match that with $29,550. That's to do the study. We already have $500,000 already we got in grants to do the work that needs to be done based on the study. So we're already ahead of the game with this project. That needs to be voted on tonight, correct?
Sure, to sign the agreement.
To sign the agreement. That's something that we have to do to get that resolved. We... I also want to talk to a couple people to see if there's a way that we can upgrade our train station. Our train station's a valuable part of this town. And they did Croydon, they did...
Levittown.
Levittown. And we got... In between us, they skipped us. So again, through some political friends and contacts, I want to have a meeting out there and see if, you know, they could allocate some money over the next year or two to really dress up that train station. The Alcon meeting, the one with the hazardous waste disposal. We have a... I got a letter from the mayor of Borden Town, or the city of Borden Town, wanted to know if I could attend the meeting this Wednesday, the 10th. And there's no way I can make it, and Jim, for other reasons, can't make it. So I talked to Dr. Melinda Rotini to see if she'd be interested. She came to a couple meetings here, and is pretty up to date on what's going on with this project. And she said she would represent Bristol Borough for now on, whenever there's a meeting, and she would give us a report on what's going on. So I think we're pretty fortunate that she's willing to attend this meeting Wednesday night and continue whatever's going on from here on in. So I just want council to know that I'm appointing her... I don't know if it needs to be voted on. I'm appointing her so this way everybody understands that Bristol Borough will have representation at this meeting and hopefully in the future. Council's all aware. You got an email a few weeks ago that we have a union meeting on Thursday, October 11th, at 3:00. I know you and Tony don't get out of work until 3:30, so we're not gonna start the meeting until you guys get here. So if anybody can't make the meeting, let Jim know. But it's a joint meeting between the union and Borough Council. They'll... We'll just negotiate back and forth. They'll be in one room, we'll be in the other room. So we're trying to...
This Thursday?
This Thursday. Jim had sent out an email.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Well, I can let you know, I'm not gonna be there because it's my... Be my wife's anniversary, so unless you got nothing, I won't be there.
Well, I was trying to set it up so everybody can make it.
I'll be there.
Okay, the last thing I want to talk about is back to the docks. That Bristol Borough was nominated for an award for the dock project. And this, according to Bill Perry, who was one of the people that we dealt with through this project. So we were nominated for this award throughout the country, including Alaska, you know, Hawaii, not just Pennsylvania. And to let everybody know that Bristol Borough won the Outstanding Project Award. So it says, "The story of Bristol Borough..." "...won the Waterfront Transit Dock Project as the state organizing organization for boating access." It's S.O.B.A. So I think it's really a prestigious award that we have won. They want to come in and present the Borough with a plaque. I don't know when they're gonna come in, but think about it, the entire country that we won this prestigious award through this project. So it's really... You feel good about, you know, we started this project, we got a lot of help trying to get it done, you know, financially, but, you know, we were the ones that dream about doing it and got it done. And here we are, a little over... It opened July 4th of last year, last year. So, I mean, to win this award, I think, you know, we all should be pretty honored and proud of it. So hopefully he comes in and, you know, presents us with something. If anybody wants to look at it and read about what happened, Jim has the packet. What else? Do we have anything? Jim?
No, just add those two items to the agenda, authorize the signing of the agreement for the grant for the drainage study and amend the JVS final plan to allow steps from the restaurant to...
JVS. Allow steps from the deck to the Borough sidewalk, correct? Is that how you want it worded?
Okay. And what's the other one?
The other one is to ex...
Authorize the signing of the agreement for the grant for the drainage study, $167,000 for the Adams Hollow Creek flood study.
Anybody have anything else they want to add to this agenda?
Yep.
Okay, so Betty, why don't you make, since you wrote them down, make the motions?
I'd like to make a motion to add two items to the agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
And propose?
Go ahead.
The one would be to sign... The sign for the agreement for the study for the Adams Hollow Creek.
I have a second. Second by Mr. Gerard. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
And propose?
And then the next item would be to approve JVS to allow steps from the deck to the Borough sidewalk.
Second by Mr. Gerard. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Propose?
And I'd like to make a motion to approve council meeting minutes for September 10th, 2018. Accept the treasurer's report August 2018. Accept the police and DJ's report for September 2018. Accept fire chief's report for September 2018. Accept inspection department report for September 2018. Accept public works department report for September 2018. And accept hard report and decisions for September 24th, 2018.
I have a second. Second by Mr. Pez. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Propose?
Did I get a motion to adjourn? By Betty, second by...